We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, October the 2nd, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Grady, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty and eternal God, we proclaim your greatness and rejoice in you, our hope, for you have extended your abundant mercy from age to age, and in your kindness you lift up those who turn to you. Come to our assistance, O Lord. Make haste to join us in our striving for faithful service to our sisters and brothers in the human family. Pour out your Spirit of wisdom and goodness upon this body, we pray, and upon the whole government and all the American people, to dwell in our hearts and guide us so that this day and every day we may obtain an increase of peace, unity, and the common good, and that the Son of Justice may shine upon this land with blessings of liberty and respect for the dignity and equality of every person. We ask this in your holy name, O Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you here to the Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting, and to those who may be viewing online, we welcome you also. We ask for those that are in attendance, if you will, to please let us make sure our phones are on silence so they would not disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. And we've got a little sunshine in this room. In all the years I've ever been here, I'd never seen the sun shine through the windows. They are a little different this evening. Commissioners, you have before you agendas. Are there any agenda items you desire to pull or add to the agenda tonight?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the agenda as is.
Great, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, is any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify or say an aye.
Aye.
Propose. Motion passed. First item of business here under one is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mister Vice Chair?
Mister Chairman, there is no one signed up for that.
For agenda topics.
Agenda topics.
Okay. All right, we will go to item two. We have this evening with us Ms. Toni Blunt, who's the Regional Impact Manager for My Future NC, and we invite you to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to have you this evening.
Thank you so much. So my name is Toni Blunt. I am a Regional Impact Manager for My Future NC, and as you can see on the slide, I'll be addressing House Bill 664 and the purpose, the educational attainment purpose of My Future NC. I am a Regional Impact Manager, which means I cover 12 counties in the Southeast Prosperity Zone, which aligns with the NC Commerce Prosperity Zone, but I reside in Craven County, so it's with pleasure that I get to share this information with all of you today. So no matter who we are and what we are, it is human nature to want to be part of something bigger than ourselves. So I'm going to take a few minutes to just share with you that part of this today. So you see, North Carolina has a skills gap crisis. I would even go as far to say there's a state of emergency around workforce talent. Two-thirds of businesses across North Carolina need employees who have some level of education beyond high school, but only about half of the North Carolinians have that level of education necessary for the needs of the employers. If you take 100 ninth grade students in North Carolina today, only 28 of those will graduate from high school on time and then go on to earn a credential or a two- or four-year degree within six years of graduating from high school. So 28 out of 100, that is less than one-third of all high school students. And what I said before was that two-thirds of our jobs require higher education. So to address the skills gap issue, in 2019, the North Carolina General Assembly passed this legislation with bipartisan support and a signature from the governor that included an educational goal for the state of North Carolina. And that goal is that 2 million North Carolinians between the ages of 25 and 44 will have an industry-valued credential or a college degree by the year 2030, either a two- or four-year degree or beyond. And the final part of that is that leads to a family-sustaining wage job. So the goal was put in place to make sure North Carolina remains economically competitive, economically competitive now and in the future, and that our citizens have the opportunity for upward mobility and for prosperity. So today in North Carolina, depending on what part of the state you're in, someone with a high school diploma can expect to earn about $27,000 a year, all the way up through 15 years of employment. With an associate's degree and beyond, a North Carolinian can expect to earn twice as much as that. So this is significant impact on our health and our financial security for families and communities. The state goal is about changing futures for generations to come. So how are we doing towards the state goal today? We're tracking at about 1.55 million North Carolinians as of the 2021 census data, which means we're about 444,000 shy by 2030. The second data point indicates that we're actually about 31,000 below where we should be at this point. The green dotted line is the direction that we should be, the red is where we're actually attaining. Next, please. And so when you take the five-year data profile from 2018 to 2021, and you look at the state of North Carolina, Craven County increased 0.8% of educational attainment. The white blue indicates the higher level of attainment in counties, and the dark are the lowest. This also gives you a good comparison of how the counties are doing in the near area. Next slide, please. One of the greatest opportunities that North Carolina should be focusing on is opportunity youth, and that is defined as a teen and a young adult between the ages of 16 and 24 that are not in school and that are not working. Craven County has 11.9% of that population that falls into that category. The pie chart on your right shows that the North Carolina demographical breakdown of opportunity youth, and you can see that students of color are taking up a good portion of this pie chart. And so we have a strong equity focus with My Future NC. Next slide, please. All of you received a Craven County attainment profile. It's a two-sided document that gives over 18 key performance indicators on all the data for Craven County. This is produced yearly by Carolina Demography out of the UNC School of Government, and it is unique to each county in North Carolina. Next slide, please. I've identified two things on the profile that I'd like for you to consider. The top red oval shows the 2 million by North Carolina state goal, and then the Craven County piece of that goal, and that would equate to 13,096 25- to 44-year-olds with industry-valued credentials or degrees. The second red oval indicates where North Carolina measured at the 2021 census, and that was at 11,025. That shows a gap of about 2,000 students. And so I would just like to take a moment to say that gap to goal is less than a lot of communities in North Carolina, and I attribute a lot of that to the work of Craven Community College, specifically the Volt Center with the short-term workforce credentials, and then the increase in enrollment in the two-year degrees, being that we don't have a university that is directly within Craven County. Next slide, please. UNC School of Government identifies three main categories. Out of all of these 18 key performance indicators, they have identified that NC pre-K enrollment, classbook completion, which is the free application for federal student aid, and the adult learner are the three key performance indicators that could help bridge this gap to goal. I also listed Carteret, Jones, and Pamlico opportunities for growth, just to give you an idea about what are some of the neighboring counties are looking at as some of their highest levels of enrollment gaps. And those are measuring things like chronic absenteeism in K-12 schools, high school graduation rate, transition to post-secondary, et cetera. Next slide, please. And so so far, within the last two years of my employment with My Future NC, I have been able to get in front of the groups that you see on your slide, and they have endorsed and signed the proclamation that not only supports the state educational goal, but the Craven County goal. So the Craven County Public Schools, Craven Community College, all of the universities in the region, Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, and the Council of Governments, the New Bernary Chamber of Commerce, and I'm soon hoping for an invitation for the Havlet Chamber of Commerce that's on the books. But we also need endorsements from the county commissioners, from municipalities, and any other organization that would like to lift this up within the work that they do. Next slide, please. I also wanted to let you know that there are two local educational attainment collaboratives that are already formed, and for the last 18 months, they have been receiving robust training from NC Impact, also out of UNC School of Government. That is Our Future ENC and Our Future ENC Opportunity Youth, specifically designed to address that 11.9% in Craven County. You can see from their vision statements that not only do they serve Craven, they also serve all of the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Counties, Craven being one of them. Next slide, please. And so the call to action of my presentation today is simply to use this county attainment profile and the data as you're thinking through all of the initiatives that come before you, follow the steps to endorse the goal, which is also in your packet, is a resolution to support My Future NC attainment goal, and then to connect with me as you need to for local and regional support, and then to also realize that there is a promising practice database on the My Future NC website, so that as we travel regionally, we find practices across North Carolina that can be replicated, that can change county attainment and state attainment goals. So with that, Chairman, I am.
All right. Questions for Ms. Blunt?
I don't have any questions, but I would say that each one of the commissioners would be for this. Now what we've got to do is convince the Board of Education.
Well, the Board of Education has signed the endorsement.
All right, any other comments? Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm a little concerned that the definition of success tends to be very weighted to a two-year or four-year degree. Now, I'm a liberal arts person. I'm also 62. It was a different world when I got out. And I would, maybe it is not in this presentation, but it is part of the plan, but I would like to hear a lot more of success is defined as is working in a job. Okay? Because we have a lot of, I call them ready-to-work programs at Craven Community College, and I am one of the trustees there. And I think sometimes when we get so focused on a two-year degree or a four-year degree, we forget not everybody wants to go to college, they have families to support or whatever, and that there are a great many trade programs that don't really meet that definition of two-year degree, that provide education to get you where you want to go in life. So I'm concerned that there is insufficient emphasis on trade school certifications with it. Does that make sense?
Is it okay to address you?
Yeah, well.
I mean, is that a question?
Yeah, it's a question. It's a question.
Yes, so there is equal emphasis on a high-quality industry-valued credentials identified by NCcareers.org, as well as two- and four-year degrees. There is no differentiation in the value of either one of those. And for students who earn those short-term credentials, they are going to college. College is just looking different from them than it is for attaining a two-year degree, but it is still considered college, it's still considered post-secondary.
Okay, perhaps there needs to be better definitions being used in this one, because I think most of us here two-years degree as an associate, and a two-year or 18-month welding degree will be earning a far higher paycheck than the two-year psychology degree. So I think it's a matter of definitions.
Right, and so the state educational attainment goal is 2 million high-quality industry-valued credentials or post-secondary degrees. It is an or, it is not an and.
Okay.
And the high-quality credential could be a short-term workforce offered through something like the Volt Center, or it could be the CDL truck driving class, which is 120 days, or it could be the two-year degree, or it could be two-year to transfer to four-year or directly into four-year. Whatever it is post-secondary, two-thirds of jobs by 2030 will require something past high school, and that is our mission statement.
Thank you.
All right, any other? Commissioner Howard?
My question would be if you had a four-years or eight-years in the military, got out with a, you know, computer certification or something like that, which wouldn't necessarily mean you spent two years in university, would that be defined as success? Or would that be, I don't know, just one question?
Yeah, I don't think that we're even defining success here. I think we're just defining when someone completes the census, did they earn a credential, whether it was through the military or a community college or the workforce, but did they earn a credential or a two- or four-year degree? And are they between the ages of 25 and 44?
Are they not offering workforce readiness classes in high school now?
There are substantial current technical education programs.
Right.
In every county, and that helps build the foundational credentials towards.
So they're not counted unless they go further, even though they are ready to take some of these local positions and do very well with them?
So CTE directors are required to report the number of credentials that are earned while students are in high school, so they are counted, and there's a degree ticker on the My Future NC website that accounts for every one of those earned.
Any other questions? Vice Chair?
Two things. Number one, your employer is funded how? Or is that a state-funded organization?
It is a House bill without funding, so it is a nonprofit. And it is funded by many of the board members that are, our board consists of the UNC President, Peter Hans, the UNC System President, the North Carolina Community College President, Jeff Cox, the North Carolina Chamber Executive Director, and then SAS, Ann Goodnight, Bank of America, MC Belk Island with the John M. Belk Endowment, Inmar Trust, and so, and the list goes on. There's some governor appointees, too. And so all of our board members contribute financially, and as well as large funders from across the state and national.
Did you say SAS?
Yes, sir.
Another question or a comment, I guess, would be more appropriate would be, I think everybody in here is excited about what's happened at the Volt Center the last, what, four or five years? And everything from the training for law enforcement to people to do HVAC work, diesel mechanics, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, because as Mrs. Mitchell said, those are the jobs that we really need to fill, and those are jobs that are going to pay well. One of my concerns is, I think there's still, and I don't know that any of us can do anything about this, but there still seems to be a driving force among so many parents that my kid's got to go to UNC, or my kid's got to go to State, or my kid's got to go to Appalachian, or whatever, and get that four-year degree. And there's nothing wrong with that, other than in my own family, of the four that have done that, three of them are gone. They're not here. They didn't come back here after they got those degrees. So I think the kids that stay here and study here at Community College, at Volt Center, or wherever, are going to go a lot farther toward us meeting the workforce goals that we've got.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's my point. And I've got one more now, it's at State, so we'll see where he ends up. Actually, actually, of my seven grandchildren, five of them got four-year degrees in North Carolina. Well, one got one in Virginia, and they all have gone elsewhere for their employment. And five out of six so far, one is here. And so that really concerns me, not just because I don't like to see my grandkids leave, but because it seems to be a trend that so many kids get those degrees and then don't come back here for their employment. So, and I think a lot of that is driven by, personally, believe, by the parents. Got to get that four-year degree. One of my favorite stories is, one of my grandsons got a business degree at a very prestigious college, and now he is a very happy firefighter in Greenville. Loves his job, already been promoted a bunch of times, and he teaches EMT in addition, and so that's what he loves doing. And I don't know that his degree was wasted, but, you know, got to go to college, got to get that four-year degree. And he didn't like business when he got out. He tried it for a couple of years, and he said, "I don't like it." So, anyway, just comments.
All right, any additional comments, questions? All right, Ms. Blunt, we thank you for coming for the board this evening. We appreciate it. Commissioners, under your board action, we do have their resolution. I'm going to ask that we would defer consideration this evening, if I hear no objection from the board, to allow a little more time to research it. Hearing any objection? All right, hear none. We thank you again for your presentation. Glad to have you with us. All right, item three is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening, you have the minutes of the September 18th, 2023 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the emergency services budget amendment, social services, Westlaw Services budget amendment. The sheriff has some rollover funds for a budget amendment. There's a resolution in support of the strength, disaster determination, and then a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull this evening?
No, sir. And, Mister Chair, I've asked that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Departmental matters. Item four is CARTS. We have with us Ms. Kelly Walker-Cuthrill. She has two items this evening. The first is a request, authorization to apply for state maintenance assistance program. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Yes, SMAP is a state-funded public transportation grant program that's administered by NCDOT to provide operating assistance to eligible transit systems, and CARTS does qualify for fiscal year 2024 funding, but is not guaranteed from year to year. CARTS has been allocated $130,920 for fiscal year '24, which is the same amount that we were allocated for fiscal year '23. A public hearing is not required. SMAP funding cannot exceed the amount of the local match for operating expenses, and its use is limited to a system's operating expenses. CARTS is requesting approval to apply for the $130,920 in SMAP funding for fiscal year '24, and a copy of the budget application has been provided.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions from Ms. Kelly? Hear no questions, do we have a motion to approve? So moved. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. This is approval to apply for the fiscal year '23-'24 SMAP funds. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify or say an aye?
Aye.
Propose. Motion passed. All right, Bee?
Thank you. Bee is Rural Operating Assistance Program, which is ROP, and it is also state-funded public transportation grant program administered by NCDOT, and it consolidates three programs, which is the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, or EDTAP, Employment and Rural General Public, or RGP. EDTAP and Employment may be used throughout Craven County. RGP can only be used in the rural areas of Craven County. CARTS has been allocated $103,736 for EDTAP, $28,759 for Employment, $45,420 for RGP, which is a total of $177,915, and is a decrease of $27,978 from fiscal year '23. A public hearing is not required, and in addition to the application, a certified statement is required. We are requesting approval to apply for the fiscal year '24 ROP grant funding.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? So moved.
I have a question.
Okay.
I apologize.
Would you hold your motion? Okay.
I had a question about the employment transportation program. Where exactly is that being utilized?
We are using that to transport passengers to places of employment. We've got individuals that are going out to the industrial park, Bosch Boulevard. We have some fast food restaurants. There's an, excuse me, an employer on Highway 17 South before you get to Riverbend. We have one individual that is going on to base. So we've got a variety of employers that are being served by that, as well as our passengers.
Do you have an approximate number of individuals using that for work?
I do not. But I can get that information for you.
Ballpark, 10, 20?
Unduplicated, I would say about 10.
Okay.
But these individuals are riding like almost every day. So when I say unduplicated, right, it adds up in regards to the total number of trips. It's not a huge population, but it is a need that we very much have been told, that they're asking for more of it.
All right, any other questions? All right, hear none, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Mark, second. Commissioner Mitchell, any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is to authorize staff to proceed with the application process for fiscal year '23-'24 ROP grant. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor signify or say an aye?
Aye.
Propose. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item is item five. We have planning. Mister Chad Strong.
Good evening, sir.
Good morning. Good evening. This is the project file already, and we hadn't even got it kicked off yet, so. Craven County has been officially notified by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that we have received $162,000 for the rehabilitation of three homes. Types improvements will consist of new roofing, repairing leaky windows, repairing plumbing and electrical issues, and removal of any lead-based paint. These homes will be identified through an application intake process, which will start on October the 3rd and last until October the 24th. We will perform outreach via our website and existing database of homes that need repairs. The households will be identified by October the 30th with an anticipated rehab start date of the second quarter of 2024. The application grading criteria will be based on clear ownership of the home, an elderly household, income, any disabilities, dependents in the household six and under, and a military-veteran household. Once the three initial homes are complete, we'll be able to apply for additional funding to help more households that will be identified through this application process. So therefore, in order to move forward with these grant funds, we request the Board of Commissioners to first accept the grant from the Housing Finance Agency, then adopt the required program policies, which include the assistance policy and procurement and disbursement policies, and finally, to approve the program budget amendment and ordinance.
All right, Commissioners, questions from Mister Strong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Booker.
Mister Strong, how does the homeowner know about this program?
So we will do our website outreach, and we also have existing extensive list of where we rode around each of the districts across the county that we've documented and got an Excel spreadsheet. And if we don't have a good phone number for them, we're going to expedite the mailing to that property address. And I ask you guys, if you have any folks in your district that would meet these criteria, to please let them know. I've got some applications with me tonight that I can share with you.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, I have two, please. You said only children six and under count?
Well, that's for the lead-based paint. So children that are from zero to six are very susceptible to lead-based paint. So they'll get more grading in the grading criteria if you have children that are between newborns.
But you have to have both. You have to have the lead paint and children under six to get that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. My second question is, who is our rehabilitation specialist?
Well, traditionally with these programs, what we'll do is we'll go out and hire a construction management company. construction management company that, and soft costs is within these grants. So what they'll do, the write-up on the structure, and they'll also do the construction management to make sure that the contractors we hire are doing this and completing the scope of work which was set forth.
Okay. Additional questions? Chad, is this, it sounds like it's very, like the old community block grants that we used to have years ago. Is that correct?
If, this is very, very similar.
Similar?
Yeah. Basically, it's a forgiven loan, so over five years, $8,000 is forgiven over five years for a total of $40,000. That's what we're going to be putting into each of these structures, $40,000 hard cost. So it's a forgiven loan. As long as they own the structure for five years, then they will not owe anything at the end of that five-year period.
Okay. All right, any additional questions?
Based on the salaries that you had on here, I would assume that's mostly in minorities?
Just based on their W-2, they provide us what they're...
So it would be a mixture then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions? All right, hearing none. Do we have, well, let me, there's three items, board action, as was stated by Mr. Strong. Again, it is to accept the grant, number one. Number two, to adopt the required program policies. And thirdly, to approve the budget amendment and the ordinance for the NC Housing Finance Agency grant. So three items under the motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Chad.
We've got these applications on the sleeve up here for you guys to...
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, item six, we have emergency services. We have several individuals here with us from West New Bern Volunteer Fire Department, and Mr. Stanikite. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I would like to just remind you that the purpose of the visit tonight is based on the legal requirements of our contractual agreement between Craven County and the fire departments, not just this one department, but it's the language that's in the contract which binds them to come before you and explain to you any capital outlay expenditures that they might be confronted with. So at this time, this is not requiring you to actually approve or disapprove, it's more or less to inform you of what they're doing. And it is based upon the current year's budget proposal, so this is not really new. It's just something that's a legal matter they have to do for you. So at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Brad Banks with the Western New Bern Fire Department to come up, and with Chief, you could also introduce your other members who are here with you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners, as Fire Marshal Kite said, my name is Bradley Banks. I'm chief of Western Fire Department. I'd like to introduce President Stuart Blunt, past president and Truck Committee Chairman Ronnie Wings, and Board Member Doug Ferguson. We are here tonight to present, to work on getting an approval from the Commissioners for getting a new truck. We are looking to replace a 1985 Pierce Aero engine. It's, we've been running issues with it. Transmission overheats, only has two seats. Tank is getting old, and it's 38 years old. What we are looking at doing is purchasing a used truck, not to exceed $400,000.
Unknown caller.
I have, I have got amortization statements from Civic Federal Credit Union. That is the lending agency that we use. That was presented to y'all, and we are not asking for any additional funding. We have a line item in our budget to cover loans in the event we purchase trucks.
All right, questions for Chief Banks? Commissioner Mitchell, this is mainly in your district, goes in mine a little bit, but you got any comments, questions?
I think it looks like a good proposal, well thought out. I appreciate the research that's gone into it.
Okay. Commissioner Hunt?
I would have to commend everybody for keeping this truck moving as well as it has for 38 years and doing what it does. That's a big job. Well done.
Thank you.
Any, Vice Chair?
Quick question, $400,000 for a used truck. Who would sell a used truck in good condition, or why would a fire department do that?
Some of your bigger cities, like Raleigh, Charlotte, they do not keep trucks longer than 10 to 15 years, and you can get some very good trucks from gov deals and from their departments because of their criteria for running an engine. Some of them keep them 10 years and then sell them due to their budget being so large they can keep upgrading with the way everything goes.
What would a truck that you can buy for 400, say it's 10, 15 years old, what a new one costs if you were to buy that?
The, this past August, when we went to the fire conference in Raleigh, a new truck right now, the lead time is two to four years, and brand-new is $900,000. And that is not including equipment. That was my question, Denny, too.
Oh, $1 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, we commend you all for watching out for the taxpayers, number one, because the fire districts are funded through fire tax, and so we commend you for doing that. Staff, we've talked about it, but just for the record, y'all have looked over their budget and everything. You feel comfortable with everything?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, no action required by this board. We thank you again for being here, taking your time. Thank you for your service, and please go back and tell all your membership that we thank you for what you do on behalf of the citizens of this county.
Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, item seven. We have with us Major McFadden here this evening. We have rollover funds, budget amendment for Sheriff's Office. Good evening, sir.
Good evening to all. We have two matters. They are both rollover matters. The first matter I have here is 4310. That's a rollover for various items, I think, that are specified in your material that you should have. That one consists largely of some ammunition and other firearms-related items. We've had a lot of problems getting our firearms orders filled over the last several years due to backlog and equipment shortages, and we are asking that money be rolled over from last year's budget to the 24 fiscal year budget to complete those purchases.
All right, any questions for Major McFadden? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second, a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $56,678. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And we have a second one, it's item 4314, a similar situation with purchase orders that haven't been filled yet. That one consists principally of ballistic vests. As you know, our vests age out over a period of time, and they must be replaced, also for new hires, some ammunition there, and also some uniforms. Money that was budgeted last year, we're asking it be approved, be rolled over to this year's budget for these items.
All right, how much was that total?
That total is $8,820.
Okay, that was under the consent agenda, so, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you for what you do, Major. All right, item eight, facilities, with Mr. Gene Hodges.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So for several years now, Craven County has partnered with Swiss Bear to make county properties available for use during the annual mum fest activities. In previous years, the use of the county properties has been limited to the parking lot of the county administration building and the parking lot of the district attorney's office. With the purchase of the Sudan Temple property, Craven County acquired ownership of the vacant waterfront parcel at the east end of Broad Street. That large parcel is traditionally the location of the amusement rides that are part of the mum fest attractions. With the increased use of county-owned property, staff and legal counsel felt it was in Craven County's interest to develop a short-term lease agreement and require insurance coverage for this event. So included in your packet was a copy of a draft lease agreement and a map of the areas that are subject to the agreement. Swiss Bear will be providing proof of insurance prior to execution of this agreement. The Board is being requested to approve the lease agreement with Swiss Bear and authorize the county manager to execute and deliver these lease agreement once all required insurance information has been provided.
All right, Commissioners, any questions from Mr. Hodges? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with Swiss Bear, and also to authorize county manager to execute any needed documents. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
All right, Commissioners, item nine. We have appointments. We have pending, current, and upcoming. We will first consider pending, are there any nominations for any pending appointments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Bob, or, excuse me, Alderman Bob Brunson for Coastal Carolina Regional Airport.
Okay, we have the nomination of Alderman Bob Brunson for the Airport Authority, are there additional nominations from the Board? Hearing none, he will be accepted by acclamation. All right, thank you. Are there any others?
For Craven Regional Library, I would like to nominate Commissioner Sherri Hunt.
All right, we have the nomination of Commissioner Hunt for the Regional Library Board. Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none, she will be accepted. Thank you.
And one more, sir. For Havelock Library, I'd also like to nominate Commissioner Hunt for that one as well, so that she serves on both.
Okay. All right, you have a nomination of Commissioner Hunt for the Havelock Library Board. Are there additional nominations? Hearing none, she will be accepted by acclamation. All right, are there any others? All right, thank you for that. That gets a few off that list. All right, under current, we have several here this evening to consider. First would be the Community Child Protection Team. You have an applicant of Casey Hoffman who seeks to fill a seat that has been vacated, was desired of the Board. Any nominations? So moved.
Second.
We have the nominations of Ms. Hoffman. Are there additional nominations? Hearing none, we will accept by acclamation. All right, next would be the Craven County Clean Sweep. We do have a position that is designated for Craven County Schools. It has been served by Mr. Michael Swain. He is no longer desires to serve, and there is an applicant from Craven County Schools for Dr. Gregory Monroe, was desired of the Board.
So moved.
Okay, we have the nomination. And for Mr. Monroe, are there additional nominations? Hearing none, we will accept him. All right, then you have the EMS Advisory Board. You have an applicant of Jackson Parker who seeks appointment. It is the seat that was held by Chief Boyd from the city of New Bern, was desired of the Board.
I recommend that we appoint Mr. Parker to that seat.
All right, we have the nomination of Mr. Parker. Are there additional nominations? Hearing none, we accept him by acclamation. All right, Fire Tax Commissioner Board, Commissioner Hunt, this is for Township 5 Harlow. This is in your district, was...
That's correct. I recommend that we give, allow Mr. Dudley to be reappointed to that seat, please.
All right, we have the nomination of Charles Dudley. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Hearing none, we will accept by acclamation. All right, then you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You have Seat 15, which has as a general seat, has been vacated, and you have the applicant of Jasmine Kennedy, was desired of the Board.
I recommend that we appoint Jasmine Kennedy.
All right, we have a nomination. Do we have additional nominations? All right, if none, Ms. Kennedy is accepted by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, are there any current that we may have forgotten this evening? Hearing none, you see the upcoming terms expiring in November. Please take note of them. Any additional appointments this evening? All right, hearing none, we have the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have four items for your consideration. Tonight, all four items involve county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first parcel was at 305 John Street with a parcel number of 7004015. You previously gave initial approval for a price of $1,500, but when we put the thing out for upset bids, we received several, with the final bid being $1,765. When we acquired the property, the past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure totaled $2,901.08, and the tax value of the property is $1,500. I would recommend the Board consider giving final approval to this one.
All right, what's the desire of the Board?
I would approve them.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving the conveyance after upset bid process for parcel number 7-004-015. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B?
Yes, sir. The next parcel was 5491 Adams Creek Road with a parcel ID number of 50201001. We had an initial offer of $3,000, and that was the only offer after the upset bid period. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $2,612.42, and the tax value of the property is $16,000. As with the first parcel, I suggest the Board consider giving final approval to this one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance after the upset bid process, parcel number 5-020-1001. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
The third and fourth parcels are both within the city of New Bern, and the county owns those parcels jointly with the city, who has previously given final approval. And I share that, before I get into the details, the first parcel that we own jointly with the city is at 2308 Pearson Street with a parcel ID number of 8039040. We had an initial offer of $2,500, and that remained the high offer after the upset bid process. We acquired the property originally with past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure in the amount of $4,624.19. The property has a tax value of $5,000. So as I mentioned previously, the city has already given final approval to this parcel, and assuming the Commissioners' desire to follow our informal practice of following the city's lead, I would suggest you consider giving final approval to this one.
Motion approved, Mr. Sh... Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance after upset bid process for 8-039-040. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, and D?
The fourth and final parcel is at 1724 Rim Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8024094. The original offer was $10,200. That was the final offer after the upset bid period expired. The original cost of foreclosure and the past due taxes together were $6,867.59. The property has a tax value of $20,250, and as with the parcel you just considered and approved, I would suggest you consider following the city of New Bern's lead and give this one final approval.
All right.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving conveyance after the upset bid process for 8-024-094. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next would be the petition of citizens for general topics. I think the Vice Chair did say we have several that have signed up. We welcome you as you speak before the Board this evening. We would remind you that we do have a timer. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I would ask when you come to the podium, if you don't mind just sharing your name and your address, that is for the record, so we will have it on file. And so, Vice Chair?
Yeah. The first person is Bonnie Locklear.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I live in 118 Pine Grove Road in Havelock. We're right across the street from Mike's Customs, a paint and body shop. We bought a '92 Ford Thunderbird, brand new, a '92. It's a long story, make it short. We took the car to him to have it repainted. My husband has cancer, and his wish was to have the car repainted. We took it over there on June 16th. He proceeded to do what he wanted to do. We gave him, when we first went there, he gave us a bill of $2,000 to do the car. We agreed he wanted half done. We went back to pay him the half done, he added the $3,000. So we gave him $1,600 done, left an amount of $1,400. Along the way, he called and he needed a part here. He didn't have any money. He didn't have any cigarettes. He didn't have anything to drink. So, in the end, we ended up left owing him $800. Went to pay the man, he wouldn't take the $800, he wanted $1,800. So we spent $150 or $130 taking the court. The judge threw it out because he said we hadn't paid him the $800. He wouldn't come take the money. I took a deputy and went to his business. He wouldn't come to the gate, he wouldn't come out. We're not the only couple that this has happened to. We're 70, I'm 76, my husband's 80, and there's other people out there that are in the same shape we're in. He won't give you, he won't let us see the car. We don't know what kind of shape it's in. We went with a couple to court last week, they got their car. It was a Chevrolet, and he had put $700 of parts on it. The man had given him $700. The judge awarded them their car plus $2,200 because he left a window open, and they can't see the car. He wouldn't let them see the car, see if there was any damage. So the judge gave him $2,200, but you'll never see that. He did get his car, but Mike took all the parts off that he put on it. But the man had to have it towed home. You couldn't drive it, he had to have it towed home. So now we're afraid of what he'll do to our car. Saturday, we went back out there with a deputy. Mike, oh, he was livid. He was all over the fence cussing my husband, and we went next door, the police officer asked us to move out, off, because he was afraid we were going to get hurt. So we moved next door, and the guy over there was talking, and when the deputy got through, he came and talked to me. Well, my husband and the man that was running the business next door were sitting out front. My husband can't hardly walk, he's 80 years old, can't hardly even get around. He was sitting in chairs, waiting outside, and I was talking to the deputy, giving him all my paperwork that I had. And we heard this commotion, and Mike had come across the yard from his property onto this other property and was after my husband. He almost got to him when the man saw him, and he got up and turned around, and he told my husband he was going to whip his you-know-what. But he also threatened to burn our house down before when my husband wouldn't give him $200. He had the money, we had the money to pay the man, but the judge didn't tell us to pay the man. We would have paid him in court if we could, if we'd known we could have. So we're going back to court on the 19th. We want our car.
Ma'am, what I'm going to ask you, if you will, at the end, just stay to the end of this meeting. You've got two Commissioners up here who represent that end. I'm just going to ask them if they would go ahead and have a private conversation with you.
Okay.
They may be able to direct you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
Second person would be Mr. Ray Griffin.
Amen. God bless you, and appreciate the prayer the lawyers just prayed, and we do need wisdom for America. Ray Griffin, Vansboro, North Carolina, the heartbeat of Craven County. One clear principle of the Word of God is the seed of destruction. There are contained in every sin, for whatsoever sows a man, so if that sows, he also reap. Someday, if this nation does not turn to righteousness, America will reap what is sown. Therefore, as Christians and those of moral nature, must not let go the flood of deceit that involves the exploitation of the weakness of man and the corruption of his spiritual and moral nature. And I'm getting to the point of what you guys are going to have to face in the near future. You may know, we know how the lottery now, which deemed an educational lottery, that I understand that y'all do not get nothing what you thought you were going to get. Someone's probably pocketing some of the money. We now have CBD stores all up and down the roads, low-grade drugs on every corner, moan oshy about foreigners, and introduction gateway drugs, and some of those are potent, from what I'm understanding. Now we'll see medical marijuana on the rise. Thirty-nine states have legal marijuana programs, 21 have legalized recreational weed. We now have become a nation under greed instead of one nation under God. We were once known as the Bible Belt. Now we have done away with the blue law, and now alcohol is a common commodity every day, including Sundays. Everywhere we go, from grocery stores to restaurants, alcohol is served, and it's hard to find even a decent place to take your family anymore to sit down, to have a meal. And now we see sports betting bill that's coming, and it's being inactive somewhere around the first of the year. They want to put up mixed drinks and wine in ballparks, and even talking about takeout orders. And now our politicians in Raleigh are burning up, are trying to build up more ABC stores and wanting to open them on Sundays and even on holidays. Senate Bill 527 contains provision for liquor stores to stay open on Sunday. Senate Bill 527, Section 3, says that they would allow ABC stores in North Carolina to sell alcohol on Sunday. However, this is where you come into play. Each County Board of Commissioners will have to approve it for when it takes effect. It would also call to give away or sell gift cards in the ABC store, unless in mixed-drink sales at conventions and festivals. What are we doing in America? We're going absolutely crazy. As I said, we were once a nation under God, but now we're one nation under greed. American lawmakers have made drug laws and had to stop those who were overdosing. A total of 109,680 overdoses were recorded last year. America has made gun laws and had to stop the killing of innocent people. America has made alcohol laws, but it hasn't stopped the one from being drunk and going down the road and killing someone, and even shooting at police officers. Next, what are we going to do, legalize fentanyl? It's estimated that somewhere around 140,000 people died from alcohol, making alcohol the force-leading preventable cause of disease in America. What I'm saying, America's got a lot of bloody hands, and all this alcohol is going to be on you if it passes on a Sunday. So all I can say is God bless you if you let this happen. Amen?
Thank you, appreciate it. Derek Van Dislon. Yes. Okay, the next one looks like Derek Van Dislon. I'm sure I mispronounced that, and I apologize.
I'm Lieutenant Van Dislon, or Reverend, pastor and chaplain. I was at Cherry Point, now I'm working at Camp Lejeune. I reside at 122 Neuse Harbor Boulevard. I echo the complaint that Mrs. Locklear had about Mike's Customs. He's a defraud, he likes to defraud people. He lies to people, he cheats people. He's had my son's truck since March. He's kept saying, oh, we'll have it to you in a week. Whenever we find him, oh, we'll get it another week. I got delayed by this or by that, got put in jail a couple of different times for I-don't-know-what. Tried to help the cops catch him at one point when he was running away from them. He hides, he don't answer his phone, he won't reply to texts. We give him money down on our vehicles, we've known several people that we've run into, I don't know all their names. We give him money down on their vehicle, and they get frustrated because he won't do the work, and finally demand their vehicle back, but they never get their money back. He's got $2,500 to do the bodywork on my son's truck, and then he was going to paint it, you know, and if he finishes it, I give him another $2,500. Well, he hasn't done any of the work that I can see, and he actually did some damage to my truck. In the process of having it there, I forced my way in at one point when he had the door open, so I could see my truck. I want him to be put out of business, is what I'm asking for. I don't know if you have the authority to do that, somehow to let other customers know that he's not a business that should be trusted or should be visited, and I want to get my truck back, because I need to get it painted for my son. It was his birthday gift, his graduation gift, and both of those have passed by, Mike promised to get them done for him, and he hasn't done any of it. So I'm just getting really frustrated. I've talked to some of the other customers that have had a hard time working with the sheriff or with the law to engage, because he just hides. They won't break into his place and allow us to get our cars out of the property. I don't know how to give them that permission, or to get more leverage to be able to get customers to receive back what they're not getting, the promises met. So I'm just asking for help. So if you have guidance that we can give, and I had a couple of possible leads before the meeting, I'd just like to bring it to your attention and know what ways we have to resolve our troubles. Thank you.
Again, if you would just stay a little longer.
Thank you.
We'll have some folks try to discuss some things with you, maybe try to, all right, anything else, Vice Chair?
That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, item 12, County Manager's Report, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I've already got one compliment on a text about the windows being open behind you. They say it was a lot more fun watching our meetings. Take that for what it's worth. Two items, and I'll be brief. October 16th, which is your next meeting, we'll have a work session. I anticipate that will probably be around 10:30 or 11:00. Because just before that, we'll also be doing a groundbreaking ceremony in our new social services complex. Based on the last couple of meetings, we've wrapped up about 9:30, so I would imagine the groundbreaking around 10:00, back here pretty quickly to get going on a work session. I do still believe we'll be finished around 2:00 PM that day. However, you know how discussion goes, so you make your plans accordingly on that. Any questions about the work session? Any topics you want to consider that you haven't talked to me about already, anything out there? One of the things, I don't think Kelly's already left, but she's going to give you a whole, and that'll probably be the longest item, will be a whole rendition of what happens next with carts, because after the end of this year, we'll lose the urban funding, and we've got to go back to a rural system, and how all that will work. So, anyway, the last thing, and I just had the really great experience last week at the North Carolina Defense Summit. I know some Commissioners there, and they'll probably talk about their experience, but I found it to be very educational. There was a lot of good information, but the networking was certainly worth the trip, being able to talk to folks in different communities, and folks even in our community. And I think a big shout out to Commissioner Mitchell for all her hard work putting that together. It was very well done, and a great group of folks that spoke and presented. So, Mr. Chairman, unless there's things for me, that's my report.
Any questions for the County Manager?
And good to see Commissioner Mark back.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next item is Commissioners' Report. Who would like to begin this evening for us?
I'll go.
All right, Commissioner Mark.
On September 19th, I held a meeting at Fairfield Harbor, and we had three directors there, and Gene Hodges, who was running most of it, did an excellent job. Leslie Young was there, and Jeff Fruttrell, both delivered terrific speeches, and I want to thank them, all three of them, for what they did. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Hunt?
Oh, okay, yes, I have a couple of things, thank you. First thing I'd like to mention is Carolina East Health Systems will have a booth at Union Point Park during Mumfest on both days, October 14th and October 15th. If anyone would like to go to their booth and have their blood pressure checked, or get their blood glucose checked, that would be the weekend to do it. I'd like to mention the fact that I attended dinner at, with the gentleman and ladies Baptist on a mission in James City recently. They're working on a house that had burnt and made it uninhabitable for a couple that lives on Highway 101. I want to give them a big shout out, because what they do is phenomenal. I spent several hours with them and learned more in depth, more details about how they do, what they do. They're extremely frugal with their talent and with the donations that they get. For instance, they buy three colors of paint, and when they have a homeowner come in, they ask them, do you want, which color do you want? So then, if they order 10 gallons of paint but only use seven, that other three gallons don't get wasted. That also helps expedite the timeline for the volunteers, so that they don't have to be down here as long. And there was a lot of other things I learned that they're doing exceptionally well. The details and the thought that they've put into these processes is phenomenal, and I think we should all just thank them if we have the opportunity to. And lastly, I did attend the Defense Summit in Raleigh last week. I found it to be highly productive myself. I met some people I hadn't met before, while I do work more closely with Marine Corps side of things, obviously. I learned a lot from the Air Force and from the Army National Guard, so I very much appreciated them bringing their knowledge and their best practices to the summit as well. And finally, a shout out to Commissioner Mitchell for a phenomenal job. Like I said, it was very, very productive, not just for me, but for everyone, everyone told me so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I attended the same meetings as Sherry, and I just, I won't repeat what she said, I'll just ditto what she said. Commissioner Mitchell did a fantastic job planning with her group. We all got great information, and it was a very pleasant experience. I'd like to make a couple announcements here. First of all, I don't know whether you are aware or not, but COVID is on a slow uptick. As of last Thursday, there were seven patients in Carolina East Hospital with COVID. So it hasn't gone away, so be careful as you've been in the past. It is on an uptick. Also, Carolina East Rehab was named among America's Best Physical Rehabilitation Centers for 2013 by Newsweek Magazine. I think that is noteworthy. And last, I would like to share with all of you, especially the folk in my district who seems to have this problem quite often, and that is air property. We have a lot of trouble with air property. I'm sure you all are aware of what that is about, and are, according to what I have here, Dorothea White is sponsoring a air property clinic. It will be held October 21st at 12:00 noon to 2:00 at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church on Walton Bellamy Drive. And anyone that's dealing with air property, I hope that you would go and attend that workshop and receive as much information as you can.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Howard.
Yes, I will say also, welcome back, Commissioner Mark. Glad to have you. I attended the NC MAC Defense Summit with Commissioner Hunt, Commissioner B. Smith, and again, thank you, E.T. Mitchell, for helping put that together. I won't go into details, I think it's been covered. It did highlight some of the things that Jack and I attended too while we were at the DC Conference, particularly the RAP program. I think we have some new ideas, met and talked about that. Also had an Eastern Carolina Council meeting, which I was just appointed to. Again, thank you, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Mitchell, for recommending me for that. A lot of interesting things they do for the small municipalities in our district, important things, so that was interesting. I won't go any more detail about that, and I will go into what Reverend Van Dislon said, was talking about, and our other guests here. It concerns me that we have businesses taking people's property onto their private property. And I know Reverend Van Dislon and his family, taking his property onto their property, keeping it for a month at a time. To me, it's tantamount to someone giving me 50 bucks to fix their car. Me taking that car, maybe fixing it, maybe not, and just keeping it, telling them to come back next week. To me, that's just theft. You know, it's nothing, simple theft. If you take someone's property, you won't give that property back to them. So hopefully, that's something the law can take care of. If someone has taken, anyone, any citizen in Craven County's property, and refuses to give that property back, and then damages that property, to me, that's a criminal activity. We have a criminal enterprise right there, so I hope that gets resolved, and of course, we'll meet with you guys afterwards, and we'll talk, maybe talk with Major McFadden and see what we can do.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
Well, I feel like I should say ditto, but I want to thank the Craven County delegation for going to the summit. One of the Eastern North Carolinas' support for our military facilities here is absolutely superb, and we showed it this time, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booker.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. So is there anything else, staff? You got anything else to bring before us this evening?
I will add one thing. It is amazing that we have a County Commissioner here that's so involved at the state level, maybe the federal level, E.T. Mitchell, on keeping military bases in North Carolina and making sure that surrounding communities are really simpatico with that, so thank you again. I mean, that's important for people that live around here. It's a big economic driver. I mean, I had some, took some statistics and some sheets that Jack brought back for me, and just looking over those sheets and seeing the infographics, it's amazing what military communities contribute to local economies. It's kind of a, it's a big deal, so thank you.
All right, here nothing else to come before the Board of Commissioners? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
I have, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I mean, I had some, took some statistics and some sheets that Jack brought back for me, and just looking over those sheets and seeing the infographics, it's amazing what military communities contribute to local economies. It's kind of a, it's a big deal, so thank you.
All right, here, nothing else to come before the Board of Commissioners? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
I have, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?